The time is now 7:02 and I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call.
Roll call shows five councilors present with Councilor Vanda Bogart and Councilor Lukey absent.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand, please?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is special order of the day and announcements. Councilor DeForest will be handling that this evening. Item three, I'll call him off as she's making her way. We have item three eight was a proclamation declaring April 27th, 2012 as Arbor Day. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas Beloit has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Kevin D. Levy, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2012 as Arbor Day in the city of Beloit, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program. And be it further proclaimed that all Beloit citizens are encouraged to plant trees to brighten the community and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Dated the 16th day of April, 2012, Kevin D. Levy, President. And I believe we have Chris Walsh here to make some introductions to receive this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to do two things. First of all, I'd like to thank Bruce Slagasky. He provided the city with managing the urban forestry for the last 16 years, and he coordinated 16 Arbor Days for us, along with the school district and businesses. Bruce has moved on, and he has accepted the street supervisor position for the city, so I think that's a great transition. And then I would like to introduce, and I'm very pleased to introduce Mike Furger. Mike is hometown Beloit businessperson, and he is now, will be, are the city of Beloit's forestry operations supervisor. And he will work with the other supervisors and operations in parks, maintaining and growing our urban forest, and dealing with right-of-way issues, landscape issues, and of course, snow. So Mike?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Arbor Day is set aside, the day set aside to celebrate and plant trees. In 1970, President Nixon proclaimed the last Friday in April as National Arbor Day. The city of Beloit working closely with the Beloit Public Schools want to use this opportunity to educate our youth on the importance of planting and maintaining trees, as well as raising awareness of our urban forest to all the citizens of Beloit. This year, Beloit's Arbor Day celebration will take place at Gaston Elementary School on Friday, the 27th, at 10:00 a.m. Gaston School is recently honored with the National Blue Ribbon Award. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have the invitations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three B is a proclamation recognizing April as teenagers drinking alcohol awareness month. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. Whereas underage drinking is especially severe in Wisconsin, and the Wisconsin Youth Risk Behavior Survey consistently finds alcohol use among Wisconsin youth to be above national averages, and whereas adults who provide alcohol to youth place them at risk for acute impairment and threats to their long-term development, and tragic health, social, and economic problems. And whereas underage drinking cost the citizens of Wisconsin $1 billion in 2010, including medical care, work loss, pain and suffering, youth violence, in addition to traffic crashes attributable to alcohol use, which represents the largest costs. And whereas young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence, and are two and a half times more likely to become abusers of alcohol than those who begin drinking at age 21, and parental support, monitoring, and communication can significantly reduce drinking among adolescents. And whereas unless you are a parent, legal guardian, or spouse of an underage individual and are 21 years of age or older, it is illegal to sell, serve, or provide alcohol to underage individuals. And whereas the Beloit Police Department routinely conducts both alcohol age compliance checks at licensed establishments, and rigorously enforce laws against selling, serving, or providing alcohol to underage youth. And whereas the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Public Instruction, and Transportation, in collaboration with regional and local community coalitions and law enforcement, are sponsoring a statewide campaign this April to reduce underage drinking titled "Parents Who Host Lose the Most: Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking." And now therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim April 2012 as teenagers drinking alcohol awareness month throughout the city of Beloit. And the citizens and city council support local community coalitions and the Beloit Police Department's education and enforcement of underage drinking violations. Presented this 16th day of April, 2012, Kevin D. Levy, President of the Beloit City Council. And I believe we have some individuals here from the Youth to Youth Coalition. Debbie Fisher.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We're really excited to share with you, and I don't know if you're aware, that we received a federal grant in August. So now for the city of Beloit, we can start working on underage drinking and teen marijuana use, as well as continue to work on teen tobacco prevention programs. So now we're ready to start in this area as well. Some of the things that we are going to do this month is the Parents Who Host Lose the Most campaign. We're also doing an ATI Above the Influence campaign with Beloit Memorial High School. And we're working with the police department to enhance the alcohol compliance. We're making, when people don't sell, we're making sure that they're recognized for not selling. So that good behavior, that strong behavior, we'll be working ahead. So we thank you for making this a priority and making a proclamation, and we're looking forward to working with you in the future to try to reduce our underage drinking, because it is a very serious problem for the city of Beloit. Our numbers are higher than some of the other cities in the state of Wisconsin, and the state of Wisconsin is way off the charts for the rest of the nation. So we've made a difference with tobacco. People look at it differently, and we know that this can happen with alcohol as well. So we look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to remind everyone also that tomorrow at Beloit Memorial High School from 5:30 to 7:00, we are hosting a town hall meeting on this very subject. So hopefully all the citizens interested will be able to make that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we can.
I'm trying to see. I'm a little... Good evening. As President of the Beloit City Council, it gives me great pleasure to stand before you this evening to recognize one of our own. So at this time, I'm going to ask Councilor Noonam if he could join me at the podium at this time. And while he's coming, I will let everyone know that tonight is Councilor Noonam's last night as a Beloit City Councilor. One of the things that we want to re-encourage from our citizens is to get involved. One of the things that we do, we announce committees, we announce, we want people to get involved to make Beloit a great place and continue to move it forward. In 2008, the call went out. There was an election, and the public spoke. And the public elected several other councilors, and one of them that they elected that year was Eric Noonam. And since Eric has been on the council, he's been an advocate for Beloit. He's not afraid to make the tough decisions. He's not afraid to speak his mind. He's not afraid to stand alone. There have been times when Eric was the lone vote, and he's not afraid to do that. And to me, that lets me know that that person cares enough about Beloit to stand alone if he has to. And that's what we want. We want people on the council who's going to move the city forward, but also have their own opinion. And Eric has done that. During his term as councilperson, he served on the Community Development Authority, Disabled Parking Enforcement Assisted Council, Traffic Review Committee, and just been an all-around advocate for Beloit, even so far as in Hollywood. In the movie Transformers, Beloit was represented there with Eric in Beloit in that movie as well. And I can only imagine, when he tried out for that role, the producers probably told him, Eric, you can't have that Beloit sign in the movie. Even though it was filmed in Chicago, in the Chicago area, I'm sure that he was wearing a Beloit pin or letting somebody know that he was from Beloit, because he wanted it to be represented, because he loves the city that he lived in, worked in, and had a business. And so as President of this council, I want to thank him for his service, not only to the council, but to the entire city of Beloit. And we present him with this plaque at this time and ask him if there's anything that he would like to say.
Right. Dave is watching us, I'm sure. Well, thank you very, very much. Those very kind words and this beautiful plaque. I will always cherish it greatly, as I will all of my time on the city council. It has been one of the great honors of my life to have an opportunity to represent the citizens of Beloit, and I hope that I lived up to your trust. It is your city. It's your government, and we're here to represent you, and I try to always remember that in each and every vote that we took, as well as trying to represent the city. I have more in our councilor comments to say, but thank you to my fellow colleagues, the city staff, the entire city staff, and certainly all the citizens of Beloit. Thank you. I'll cherish this always. Thank you.
And I'm sure, I'm sure your fellow councilors would like to add comments, and I'm sure they're going to say that under the council comments. So we'll wait for that moment. At this time, I would like to move to item four, which is public hearings. Item four A, please.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and outdoor sales, possession, and consumption of alcohol in a C3 community commercial district for the property located at 904th Street. Tilly's Pizza House and Valihue Bar. It's noted that the Plan Commission recommended approval four to one.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
Tilly's is in the process, as we all know. Constructing a new 5,281 square foot building. Had is proposed a 695 square foot outdoor seating area on the 4th Street side of the building. The outdoor seating area is designed so that patrons will access the outdoor seating area through a door in the bar area, and will include an emergency exit. It will be surrounded by a fence that consists of brick and stone columns and aluminum railings with an overall height of approximately five feet, and the brick and stone columns will match the new building. Plan Commission to review this on April 4th, and they did adjust the maximum capacity from 35 persons to 46, and they approved the conditions that are included in the resolution, which is in your packet, which is that this conditional use permit authorizes the 695 square foot outdoor seating area on the 4th Street side of the building. As shown in the application attachments, if you looked, there was a nice drawing of what the building is beginning to look like. It's a very attractive building. Prior to the establishment of the conditional uses, the applicant shall amend the liquor license for the premises to include the outdoor seating area. The applicant shall obtain a fence permit before constructing the fence around the outdoor seating area. The maximum capacity shall be 46 persons, and the maximum capacity shall be posted inside the building and within the outdoor seating area. The door leading to the outdoor seating area shall be marked as an exit. The outdoor seating area shall include an emergency exit door or gate that is at least three feet wide, and a clear exit path should be maintained at all times. The applicant should provide a visible and/or audible fire alarm within the outdoor seating area. That condition, we've heard from their architect since the Plan Commission meeting. And based on their concern, we checked with fire. Their issue is that their audible fire alarm is actually 70 feet away from the outdoor seating area, and they asked that we amend the condition to allow that fire alarm to be outside of the building. I have checked with the fire inspectors, and they have no problem with amending the condition. So if, you know, if you agree, we'd ask that you amend Condition Six, instead of saying within the outdoor seating area, say outside of the building. That still will provide the alarm for the residents who, for the patrons of the restaurant in the outdoor seating area. And then Condition Seven is music may not be played in the outdoor seating area after 10:00 p.m. And then Condition Eight is our standard condition, just saying that if there's a major change to this outdoor seating area, that it has to come back through this public process, but that staff may approve minor changes administratively. And it was approved, recommended for approval by Plan Commission four to one.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up item four A. For public comment, I would like to open up the public hearing on item four A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item four A this evening? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Donovan, 17137 West Avon North Town Line Road in Broadhead.
Ron Tilly, 2802 Chatsworth Drive, Beloit.
Thank you.
The, the permit also has a visual scene for the alarm system, and it's, it's right up against the glass windows, and you can, if, if the alarm goes off, you'll be able to see it inside, plus be able to hear it outside.
We have two, actually.
Right.
One is inside, which is 30 feet from the outdoor seating area, and the other one is outside the building, which is the 70-foot, and they're both audio and visual.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Third and final call. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four A this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public comment on item four A and entertain a motion at this particular moment. Councilor DeForest?
Mm-hmm.
As, actually, before we, it's been motion and second, and I'm just going to take it that that motion and a second is also to amend item six, which now reads the applicant shall provide a visible and/or audible fire alarm outside of the building. Is that included in your motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I think that amendment in my motion.
Thank you. It's been, it's been motion and second. Councilor comment, Councilor DeForest?
I'd just like to clarify the occupancy rate fluctuation, fluctuation, Mrs. Christensen. Do you, do you have any concerns about setting a precedent for adjusting the occupancy rate?
No. I, I mean, conditional uses by their very nature are case by case. So you look at each one separately and make the determination for that outdoor seating area.
Okay. And the staff's recommendation is that the space is sufficient for holding that number of people?
I believe it will hold the 46. I mean, it'll be a lot tighter than what we recommended. And I guess if they don't fit, I mean, if they don't fit, they, they won't fit, but then they'll have less people on those tables, so.
All right.
They'll find in practice whether that works with their waiters and waitresses and stuff like that. But, but that 46 is what the maximum allowed by building code.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor DeForest?
No.
Thank you. Councilor Haynes?
I've handled my question as well.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on item four A. All those approval, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes five zero. Item four B, please.
A proposed ordinance to amend the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from PLI, Public Lands and Institutions District, to C1 Office District for the property located at 250 Garden Lane. The Plan Commission recommended approval five to zero.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
This property is the former Rock County Courthouse, which has sat vacant for a number of years. They did purchase the property, the applicants, in 2007 from RVB partnership, and their intention at this time is to establish retail and office uses as are permitted within the C1 district. The current PLI zoning district, which I think it was zoned because it was a courthouse, limits the use to public and quasi-public uses. If this is approved, they would intend to reuse the building to establish the office in retail uses, and, which are allowable in the C1. And Plan Commission did review this and vote unanimously five zero to recommend approval. And we did notify people within 300 feet of the site, and that notice is attached in your packet.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on item four B. If there's anyone wishing to speak on item four B, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I am Kelly Tabal-Clobes. I reside at 4211 South 122nd Street in Greenfield, Wisconsin.
Okay.
My brother Jeremy Tabal and I are managing members of Jaeger Bay Properties, and we own the 250 Garden Lane along with 220 Garden Lane, which is the parking lot that is next door to the courthouse building.
Okay.
And in discussion with the zoning department, they suggested that we, that we zone it to C1, although we actually would request that it be zoned at C3. But unfortunately, at this time, that would mean we would need to revisit the comprehensive plan that the city currently has for both properties, the 220 property and the 250 property. So I would just like to make you aware that although we, we do want it to be C1 right now, so that we can at least get the building usable, and that the, that the tenants that will be moving in will not be moving out when we, when and if we can get it rezoned to C3. We just want to be able to use the second floor for basically the space that it provides, which would be event space, and currently, we can't do that in C1. So the second floor will be nonusable, or unusable should be the word, when we rezone it to C1, just so you're aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Anita Williams. I live at 911 Bushnell Street in Beloit. I'm president of the parish, senior warden of St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 212 West Grand Avenue. Our parish vestry, the church's governing board, has asked that I speak to the council tonight about our concerns regarding this rezoning. I feel I'm in an awkward position, although a little less awkward because of the previous speaker, because on the face of it, there is little to be concerned about. A developer is asking you to rezone a long empty building from a public lands and institutions zoning to a C1 office district use, something we in Beloit would normally applaud. But there is, as we have just heard, a subtext to their request, and that is their publicly stated desire for C3 zoning to allow for the opening of two 200-person banquet halls. We have concerns about this. First, the amount of traffic even a C1 rezoning will generate seems to indicate a need for Garden Lane to be repaved in a minimum, if not fully rebuilt. If you haven't driven on the street for a while, I encourage you to do so. It is a jarring experience. In a time of tight budgets, where is the funding for street resurfacing to come from? If the rezoning is granted, and there is no street improvement, and there is traffic increase, Garden Lane will deteriorate even more than it has already. Second, there is now a 90-child daycare center, which is open from 4:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. that is across Garden Lane from the building in question, and I believe this rezoning raises safety concerns for the children and parents who use the center. I have spoken to the director and the owner, and they report there already is a shortage of safe parking for parents when they deliver and pick up their children from daycare. I would also add that Mrs. Farr, who owns the daycare center, is extremely and adamantly opposed to the idea of C3 zoning because it raises a further issue, the ultimate rezoning that the petitioners desire, which will allow them to open two banquet rooms and potentially apply for a liquor license, which is a permitted use in the C3 district, although the property in question is within 300 feet of not one, but two churches, which should prevent a liquor license from being granted. The idea of two banquet rooms for 200 people each being active simultaneously with the traffic volume this entails, patrons, waitstaff, kitchen staff, is a scary prospect if you are a daycare center owner. I realize that is not the rezoning that's being applied for tonight. I also know, based on eight years' service on the city plan commission, that the tendency of petitioners is to make the argument, but you gave us a C1 zoning, and we've invested all this money and all this time, and it's not fair to say no, once commercial zoning of any kind is in place. My response to that, quite honestly, is you should have checked out the rules and requested the rezoning before you invested the money. It appears that Jaeger Bay did not perform their due diligence. Opening this parcel to commercial zoning seems to be the only way to permit any redevelopment to proceed. I urge the council in the strongest terms possible to grant only this rezoning request and not succumb to the slippery slope of the C3 request the petitioners initially desired. If you look at the application that is in your packets, you will see that C3 was the original request, and that was written over with a C1, and which they have told you this evening. They intend to come back and ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Kelly Globes, again, for Jaeger Bay Properties at 4211 South 122nd Street in Greenfield. My only comment to that, I completely agree with her regarding the amount of traffic, which is something that we were going to be hopefully addressing with the city about Garden Lane, because obviously, if we put, even if a real estate office opens on the third floor, or say, a photographer or something, or anything that's permitted in C1, business is going to obviously pick up, and people are going to be needing to drive down that street. In discussions that I've had with... In discussions that I've had with, um, people who take their children to Aqua World, I believe is what it's called, correct? Um, and to the church that is, uh, the Baptist church that is directly on the corner, um, next to the courthouse building, uh, the pastor there has spoken with me and with our maintenance, um, personnel regarding their excitement, um, that something is actually going to occur there, because then they know that, um, we will be increasing security around the property. There will be more lighting around the parking lot area. Um, we are, will be installing cameras, um, in the area, so hopefully, we will be deterring from any sort of, um, nuisance that has already, uh, been gallivanting through our parking lot. Um, and, uh, we, my brother and I have stated this multiple times, that, um, that we will not be requesting anything remotely, uh, close to a liquor license, because we don't want to have to have that liability. So, um, so I understand everything that she's saying, and, uh, I hope that you would consider, um, the amount of money that would need to be, uh, that has already been invested in that property, that, you know, is a beautiful piece of property that, um, Beloit has, and that we want to, um, transform it into something that is, is useful for the city and the community, um, surrounding us.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item four B? Third and final call, anyone else wishing to speak on item four B this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close that portion, uh, the public hearing on item four B. Uh, there is a, I need to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm looking to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
It's motion by DeForest. Is there a second? Second by Haynes. Um, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five to zero. Now to the merits. Is there a motion for approval?
True.
Motion by Haynes. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by DeForest. Counselor comments or discussion? Counselor DeForest?
Mr. President, could I ask a question of, um, Ms. Tobal-Clobes, since she's here, about her intentions with the liquor license? Could I ask for, if that be appropriate?
Um, I, I will, I will allow it, uh, Counselor DeForest, but I just wanna make sure that I, I preface it by saying this, that I wanna make, that, to make sure that we don't get into, uh, dialogue, back and forth with, with all parties. Uh, I wanna make sure that we get maybe a question in, and then move forward from there. Okay?
If I could just ask for clarification. You said that is not your intention to apply for a liquor license. Are you looking to apply for exemptions for alcohol to be served at special events? Uh, I just wanna make sure that I heard you clearly, that you said you would, you're not interested in applying for a liquor license for that site.
Um, we know of, um, we haven't visited the idea of liquor being served in those spaces. Um, currently, obviously, a facility like that, or a space like that, would, um, deem, say, weddings, or seminars, or classes, or kids' events, or a bar mitzvah, or anything that would remotely need to have space to be two hundred people. That does not mean that it would be, um, an event that would serve alcohol by any means, but that doesn't leave out the idea that, you know, it, it could have the potential of serving alcohol. Um, I'm stating that, um, my brother and I, as property owners, don't wish to be the license holder for the liquor. Um, I know of such places like Best Events, um, that they hold a liquor license for, um, serving alcohol. We don't know how, um, that will, we don't know how that all works as far as them being the license holder and being able to, uh, cater in that space. So we haven't researched all that. We have been looking into it. We have been asking questions, um, but basically, we are going to be the facilitator, and the, we are going to open it up to other places that already, um, cater throughout the city or, uh, surrounding areas to be able to, um, be a caterer at that facility, if that makes sense.
So let me jump in here, and basically, what I'm understanding it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you're saying you're not gonna hold a liquor license, however, you're not gonna preclude anyone who may be in the catering business right now that has a liquor license for coming in to hold an event. Therefore, they may have liquor at this establishment. Is that basically what you're saying?
Correct, but we will have obvious security measures put in place, and that would have to be, you know, agreements between us and them for liability reasons, um, for them even coming in and doing, uh, any sort of business in there.
Right.
It's not like anybody can just walk in.
And right now, the way that, right now, what we're looking at now is, you're not, even with the zoning that you're going for now is not permissible for you to have liquor in there anyway, however, but you're thinking down the road if you go to a C3, but that would have to come back to this body.
We would have to change the commission, we would have to address the comprehensive plan first, and then, once that would be approved, then we would have to request a C3.
Right.
So there's definitely, um, a long time that we would have to go through that process.
And I understand your probably, uh, your concern, Counselor DeForest, and I just wanna make sure that, right now, we look at the C1 zoning and knowing that if it's going to a C3, it has to come back to this body, and definitely, we can ask the questions that, I mean, the tougher questions at that time, but I think, right now, we're just looking at getting a zoned C1. Um, I'm comfortable with the fact that if they want to go to a C3, that it has to come back to this body, and we have, we have that opportunity to review it again.
Could I ask one more final question?
Sure.
Uh, I just wanna make sure that there's a clear, a clear sense that, uh, your business will be able to thrive and continue, and you're still interested in the investments you're making despite the chance that you might not receive that C3 zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Counselor Haynes?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, I, when we get off on that tangent, I just did wanna make sure everybody understood that, that the uses we were talking about, that just occurred with, between, uh, the council president and Counselor DeForest and, and the applicant, were uses that were, would not be allowed in what we're about to approve, uh, hopefully.
Right. Correct.
So, okay, so as long as the public is aware and everybody else is aware that those were C3 uses and not the uses we're discussing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Spritzer?
Thank you. I think it's great to have this building getting into use again, so, uh, I certainly support this, and, and just wanna echo the sentiment that we'll deal with the C3 if and when it comes before us, and, and to plan, assuming that that may or may not happen, because we're, uh, you know, we don't wanna indicate any likelihood of that by supporting this tonight.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. It's been motion and second. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five, zero. Item four C, please.
Proposed ordinance to amend the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from PUD, Planned Unit Development District, to C3, Community Commercial District, and MRO, Milwaukee Road Overlay District, for the property located at sixteen-ten Willowbrook Road. Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
Um, the city initiated this zoning map amendment. The Planning and Building Services Division is in the process of rezoning all PUDs that were approved but were never developed or failed to meet specific conditions of approval. Um, you've seen a couple already. In two thousand and five, city council adopted a resolution authorizing the rezoning of sixteen-ten Willowbrook from C1 and MRO to PUD. The property owner failed to meet all the listed conditions within the adopted resolution and did not submit a final site plan to the planning division. When this occurs, the zoning ordinance instructs the Plan Commission to remove the land from the PUD zoning district. We did send a public notice to the nearby property owners, as well as sending a notice to the owner of the property. We did not hear from anyone opposed to it. Joel Patch did call and, um, express his support for this rezoning to C3. Plan Commission did review this item at their last meeting and voted unanimously five, zero to recommend approval of this rezoning.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on item four C. Is there anyone wishing to speak under item four C this, this evening? Please step forward and state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on item four C this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item four C this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing on that and entertain a motion for council to suspend the rules. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules and go directly to the merits of the ordinance.
Motion by Noonan. Is there a second? Second by Haynes. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes five, zero. Now to the merits. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Haynes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Spritzer. Any counsel, comments, or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes five, zero. Item five, citizens' participation. We have reached a portion on the agenda now where citizens may come forward and speak on items that are not necessarily on the agenda. We would not address these. Uh, we refer them to the right department. We ask you to refrain from personal attacks of counselors, staff, uh, and anyone else. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the citizens' participation this evening? Seeing none. One, all right?
One brave soul.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Kavya Parsa, eight-forty College Street, care of Beloit College. Um, I would, first of all, on the behalf of Beloit Backyard Chickens, like to thank, uh, Mr. Noonan for his service on the city council, and congratulate Mr. Kincaid, um, for incoming. We look forward to working with you into the future. Um, we would also like to thank the council members for your work so far on the chicken ordinance and for, um, accepting our assistance with a workshop into the future, and we do look forward to seeing that ordinance and working with you. Um, we would also like to inform you of an event that we are putting on this Sunday at five o'clock at Bushnell and Pex. We're doing a screening of Mad City Chickens, um, on which you can be informed of a similar ordinance that passed in the city of Madison, um, and get more information on this issue. Um, at this point, I would also like to submit another ninety-six signatures to our petition, which would take us up to five hundred and seventy-five total on our ordinance. Um, and so with that, we, I would just like to thank you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the citizens' participation?
Mad City Chickens is on the twenty-ninth, twenty-first.
The twenty-ninth. Okay, the twenty-ninth. Thank you. So, you know, one else. I would like to close that portion of the agenda and move forward, and I'm gonna move the agenda around just a little bit here. We're gonna go to managers' reports and presentations at this time. Uh, city manager, Arf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the first item we have, uh, this evening is ten A, uh, which is a resolution. Would the clerk please read the title?
Yes.
A resolution approving the development agreement regarding the four-hundred block of East Grand Avenue and amending the twenty-twelve capital improvement budget to fund city participation.
Thank you. City manager, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, we, uh, we were approached by the Hendrix Development Group some time ago with preliminary discussions, and in the, in the last few months, with a pretty serious dialogue by creating a public-private partnership to redevelop the south side of the four-hundred block of Grand Avenue. Properties included in the scope of this project are four-sixteen, four-eighteen, four-twenty-two, four-thirty, and four-thirty-two East Grand. This area has generally been referred to as the Wagner Site, involves a building that's been sitting vacant for eleven years. There are two smaller buildings adjacent to it that are still occupied, and work is underway regarding the acquisition of that site at this time. Uh, last Monday, we had a fairly, had a workshop and a fairly extensive discussion. Representatives from Hendrix Development were in attendance, explained the scope and scale of the project in some detail. We talked about the pro forma that was presented to the city, showing the need for the public participation, the fact that there was indeed a million dollars available within TID five. There would be no general purpose government funds used for the project, but there is sufficient a TIF revenue to support a redevelopment of this magnitude. Uh, the city's contribution through the TIF funding, uh, would be a maximum of a million dollars, although that would be based on pre-approved actual expenses related to property acquisition, demolition, and environmental cleanup of the site. The private, uh, developers' contribution to the project would be in excess of six million dollars. There's a six-to-one ratio here of private investment to public dollars. Uh, we showed photographs at that time, building elevations and site plans. They're looking at forty thousand square feet, four stories of building, three residential, would be apartments, possibly with Beloit College as the prime tenant, uh, but if not, they would be twenty, there would be twenty-seven, uh, conventional, what they called executive style apartments built on the site. Uh, we have, uh, various controls built into the draft development agreement. Uh, the reimbursement of the funds would be spread over the period, uh, probably about a year to eighteen months, as, uh, construction progressed, with the first payment, uh, being made approximately thirty days after the development agreement, uh, is executed. That would be for two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, which is basically the cost of the Wagner's building, which has already been expended by, uh, the developer, and other payments would be made as the, uh, as the project progresses, with the last amount being paid when the actual occupancy permit is issued, meaning the project is complete. So these timelines are built in as a part of our due diligence to ensure that the developer does in fact perform, and even though we're working with Hendrix Development, very familiar name, when it comes to city center redevelopment projects, we still wanted to, uh, have those controls built in. Uh, the Broad Street parking lot improvements would be deferred. They were scheduled for this summer. They would be deferred until the end of construction and, uh, done at that time, along with the conclusion. There's a number of boilerplate-type issues in here, language relating to environmental issues. I also do wanna mention that there's one other substantive item. Uh, paragraph ten provides for an option for the city to purchase a yet-to-be, a created zoning lot on the north end of the Eclipse Center, uh, a space that previously housed a Kohl's store, uh, and part of the old Sears store that were on the north end of the mall. Uh, I wanna emphasize that this option is for a period of five years. It's for a dollar, so basically, the site would be given to the city if the council decides at some point to build a police station and to locate it at the Eclipse Center, and this option could be exercised. We could get our site for a dollar. I also wanna emphasize that this is not a decision tonight on a police station. This is merely contingency planning, and this is an option that'll be set aside for our use when and if, uh, the time is right and the funds are available, proceed with that project. I believe, Mr. President, that concludes the substantive provisions that are included in the development agreement. Again, there's a number of boilerplate sections, uh, provided as well. This document has been online for some time for review. I also wanna comment that this resolution also creates a supplemental appropriation in the city's capital improvements budget, or the million-dollar amount. Uh, this was talked about a bit last fall, but the project had not matured enough to include it into the two thousand and twelve budget back in November when council acted. So we will need to, uh, include that tonight by supplemental appropriation. So those are the two items that are covered under A, the development agreement for the corner block of East Grand Avenue development. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, uh, city manager, Arf. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Noonan. Second by Haynes. Counselor comments? Counselor DeForest?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to make sure, uh, it's emphasized to the public that, uh, the funds used to, uh, pay for this development project are coming directly from the proceeds, um, of this, um, tax incremental financing district. The, the money that's generated from this business district is what's paying, uh, directly for, uh, this project. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Spritzer?
Uh, just wanted to make a, a couple of comments. I think this is great, uh, if anybody hasn't had a chance to see the design plans, that everybody should take a look at it, because I think, uh, yes, this is a lot of money, but, uh, we would've had to do something with this site at some point anyway, because of the deterioration. Uh, if, uh, if, uh, this weren't going forward, uh, this will grow the tax base. Uh, it fixes a hole in the downtown with a absolutely beautiful building, uh, and I think it's important to note that this really plays into, uh, the work we've already been doing with promoting upper-floor housing in the downtown. Uh, this would be a, a massive increase in upper-floor housing, and, uh, by bringing that residential community in, I, it's gonna help businesses, and I think this is a fantastic project to close out this TIF as, uh, the final piece of the work we've done to rebuild the downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, if I could, like to thank Hendrix Development. Uh, this is another significant commitment on behalf of Diane Hendrix and the entire Hendrix Development Organization to Beloit City Center.
Thank you. Counselor Noonan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to, uh, continue the comments, uh, that Counselor DeForest was mentioning. Because, uh, uh, it's in a TIF district, those dollars must be spent for improvements[1752.08] Because it's in a TIF district, those dollars must be spent for improvements in the downtown district and only in the downtown district. And so we are limited to find partners that we can work with to bring such a quality development, and we're very pleased and thankful for that. It also will give an incredible boost to all the other businesses in that immediate area. That property has sat vacant for over 10 years now, and because of that, the businesses in that area don't see the constant flow of patrons that would have otherwise been in that property, and they might thereby stop by theirs. So I think that there's going to be a great deal of interest by all the shareholders in that downtown district. It also will be a huge increase in the property tax generated from that, those parcels that will show return for the overall city. And so there are so many, very many positive things to be had by this. And if I can, one last thing. I'm just, I'm so pleased that this came tonight, my last meeting. I've been a strong advocate, as many others have, for supporting our, all of our city employees, but our police officers, our professionals have worked so hard to improve our, the crime in our community, to reduce rates, protect our citizens. And the department has been woefully, did not have enough square footage for really the last 20 years. And so they've been really working kind of with their hands tied behind their back, and they've understood that we've had tough economic times and have been very patient. I'm so pleased, though this is not formally going to push the police station, but I'm so glad to do one more vote, pushing that forward so that when we do have the ability and our, our bonds to be able to do that. I look forward to that day for you as well. Thank you.
Councilor Haines.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, to, you know, remind everyone what a significant swing in our fortunes this is. Two years ago, when we were looking at this building, knowing that it was condemnable, knowing that it was a blight on our, on our downtown, had, we had no possible reuse for this building. We knew that there was going to be costs of several hundred thousand dollars to remove it, and then all it would be was an empty tooth in our ground. And for Hendrix to come forward with this project changes it from basically spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to lose, losing the tax, taxes for the building, to losing the businesses, to losing all of the traffic and the integrity of our downtown, to now having the possibility of having a beautiful building in its place that does nothing but add to it, to our integrity of our downtown streetscape. I think this is just, it's an amazing testament to our deliberateness and our diligence in bringing something to the downtown and Hendrix for coming forward and being able to do this for us. And I hope that they're, that they're successful with, with their economic plans for work. Certainly, we don't want them to, to take a loss on this.
Okay. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd like to echo my colleague's sentiments about how fantastic it is that we will increase our, our tax base by adding this property. And with Councilor Noonam, I've been very adamant about promoting upper-floor housing for our downtown area because the research shows that that really helps downtown businesses thrive by increasing pedestrian traffic. I do want to make a, just a real clear emphasis point of clarification that having this option does not in any way, in my opinion, influence our decision in terms of where we cite the police station. I, I just want to make that point very clear. I'm adamantly in favor of moving forward on the establishment of a new police station, but this in no way admits the city in any way to say that we have to cite it at the Eclipse Center. So I just want to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, because I was going to jump in and make a clarification as well, that I want to make sure that we're looking at the location. It's very important. It's going to be very advantageous to the downtown area, but I also want to make sure that we're clear that this does not in any way tie us to, this is where we got to go for the police station. I want to make sure that that message is not out, gets out there, because once the development downtown finishes, we don't want people looking at us saying, now when's the police station coming because you said? So we understand all the comments. I appreciate all the comments, but I just want to make sure that we walk that line very carefully, okay? Thank you. There is a motion and a second for approval on item 10A. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes five zero. Item 10B, please.
A resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a housekeeping matter. We do these every year. You may recall about a month ago, council was presented for a resolution related to general purpose infrastructure improvements that are scheduled citywide. They're going to be funded through a general obligation debt issue a little bit later this spring. This particular resolution tonight relates to the TIF 5 improvements that were included in the original budget, which are such projects as the Broad Street parking lot, we talked a little bit about that earlier, the Mill Street parking lot, East Grand, the new rehab project you authorized tonight, and the West Grand parking lot. Those projects are, appear as though in aggregate, they're going to require about 1.6 to 1.65 million dollars in what's called lease revenue debt. Again, this is not an obligation of the general taxpayers of the city. This is an obligation of the TIF district only. As you also heard earlier, we're getting ready to start on the Mill Street parking lot, which will be done in the next few weeks. First payment on, on this particular redevelopment project may also be due by the end of May or very early in June. So we need you to authorize us to go ahead with those expenses, understanding that they're going to be, the city is going to be repaid later from the bond proceeds. Right now, we're looking at a closing on the bond issue, probably in early June. Again, if there are any questions, Mr. President, be happy to answer them at this time.
Is there a motion for approval of item 10B? Motion by Haines, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Spritzer. Any council comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes five zero. Item 10C, please.
A resolution approving farm leases between the city of Beloit and Joe and Erica Rebout Farms.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was on your agenda at the last meeting. Counselors asked that we send a letter to all of the property owners that border this property. This is a vacant parcel of land located actually behind Woodman's on Burton Street. We refer to it just generally as the Woodman's site because of its location. It has been owned by the city for several years and has been mowed all summer long. The cost of mowing that site annually is, is in the magnitude of $5,000. As you know, with this year's budget process and the difficulties we had, the city has gone through a number of exercises, looking at ways to cut even relatively small expenses of this nature out of our budget. This is one of several areas that we've looked at where we have vacant sites to see if we could find something else to do with this property. There was a general consensus among the staff that we would put this out for a bid or proposal to convert this land to an agricultural use. We have done that. We've gotten bids back. The highest and best bid was from Joe Rebout of Janesville, and this would return this to regular crop land, where it would be cultivated and cropped, and that would save about $5,400 a year in mowing costs and would produce somewhere between three and about $5,300 a year in, in rental income for the agricultural use. We're looking at the total rental revenue over five years as being about $20,000, and there would be about $27,000 in mowing costs. Following last meeting, we did send a letter to all the adjacent property owners. We invited them to come tonight if they wanted to speak to this issue or to, to contact us. We did get two emails and a small handwritten note. One of the resident, and none of the residents were opposed to converting this to an agricultural use. One gentleman inquired about whether he could buy some real estate off of the site. We certainly will contact him to see if there, there's a realistic way that could be done. Another gentleman suggested a community garden. Unfortunately, this is 24 acres. You need something like a quarter of an acre to a half of an acre would be a huge community garden. So I don't think that would be terribly practical and would, would, the space would be dwarfed by the size of this particular site. And there was one handwritten note also from a resident that lived in that area that didn't address any specific issues with that. So with that, Mr. President, I think that concludes my staff comments. So we are recommending that we do award to the high bid, Mr. Rebout, rebout for use, for agriculture use for the site. As council is aware, there was an alternative to simply mow it and, and leave it, let it grow up and, and let the weeds grow up and mow it, and that would produce the savings of about $18,000 to $27,000 for mowing costs, but would not produce any revenue. It would be revenue neutral. If that's council's option, if you would prefer to leave it in grass, let it grow up, then two things. Number one is we will definitely need to post some signs on it so people know that that's intentional. We will keep the right-of-ways mowed around the periphery of the site. And two, then you would need to defeat this particular resolution or fail to introduce this resolution, but basically reject the bid. And then if council rejects the bid, we can do the grass mowing piece administratively because there's no money involved, and we don't need council's approval to do the grass piece, if that's your choice. Okay? If there are any questions on that, I'll be happy to provide further explanation.
Is there a motion for approval of item 10C?
Second.
Who?
DeForest.
Motion by DeForest, second by Noonam. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I would like to first comment by saying I appreciate the city's willingness to be creative about looking at some of our, our costs and how we can save money. And I am also very appreciative to the staff for honoring my request that we send a letter to all the adjoining residents there, so thank you for that. I do have one specific question about the farm lease. In the original proposal that Joe and Erica Rebout provided to us, they had mentioned that they would rather not do some of the terrace maintenance. Is it, are we seeing that they will do all the maintenance of the property with this agreement?
I believe, it was my recollection, that they were merely going to farm it. We would still have to mow the, the one terrace on the frontage along Burton Street. I believe that was my recollection. Unfortunately, Mr. Flesch is not here tonight, but that would be it. The rest of the site would all be in farmland, so there would be no other maintenance required.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Noonam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank the staff for taking the time to reach out to the residents, specifically the property owners adjacent to, to this parcel. I think that speaks highly that we appreciate all of our citizens, and I always appreciate that, so thank you very much for that.
Okay. Any other council comments or discussion? There is a motion and a second for approval of item 10C. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes five zero.
With that, Mr. President, that concludes my report. I appreciate the special privilege this evening. As you know, I have a personal matter to deal with involving a recognition event for my wife, so if you'll excuse me, I'm going to leave at this point, and you can proceed with the balance of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make sure you tell her congratulations from all of us.
Thank you, I will. I will do that.
Now we go back to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are, are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any council who would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Spritzer, is there a second? Second by DeForest. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes five zero. Item seven is ordinances. There are none. Item eight is appointments. There are following people. The undersigned, I, Kevin Levy, duly elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to the confirmation of the Beloit City Council, do hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancies in terms indicated below. Said appointment is being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at a regular meeting held April 9, 2012. To the Municipal Library Board, Samantha Johnson. To a term ending June 30, 2013. To the Plan Commission, Stephen F. Smith. To a term ending April 30, 2015. To the Police and Fire Commission, Lisa McGowan. To a term ending April 30, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Noonam, is there a second? Second by Haines. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none passes five zero. Council activities and upcoming events. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is, it is a great honor to have been able to serve with Councilor Noonam, and I just want to thank him for his service. You're really going to be missed. I, I know that you will continue to be a great champion for Beloit, and I really appreciate having another voice on the council that has been not afraid to dissent and is as adamant about making sure that we hear residents' concerns and that their voices are represented. So I just want to personally thank you for that and wish you well. Thank you.
Councilor Haines.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm at a loss for words, Eric. You'll, you'll definitely, you're, you'll be missed. Your influence will be missed, and certainly regret seeing you leave this board.
Councilor Spritzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to say a few words about Councilor Noonam. Eric taught me about the history of Beloit and about how the city council worked for his first three years being here and was a mentor and certainly a great help when I decided to run and to join this body, and it's been a pleasure to be able to serve with you for the past year. It's been an honor, and certainly we will miss you and miss your voice, whether with the majority or in dissent. It's, it's always been, been welcomed and, and appreciated, so I wish you well with wherever you go next, and you'll certainly be missed.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Noonam. Three minutes.
Here I thought I was living my life quietly tonight. I didn't realize all this was going to happen. Thank you all very, very much for those very kind and words and emotions. It's been such a great honor, serving with each and every one of you for sure, as well as those that were here for the last couple of years, as well as with the staff. We have an incredible staff. It's been very educational as well. I think every counselor would say that. Everyone comes in with, with different ideas, and as you see how large and complex the organization is, it runs 24/7, 365. It's amazing of all the hard work that gets done and just happens seamlessly. So thank you to everyone throughout the entire staff, including those that are here tonight, as well many of the cameras here and in the booth over here. It's always a pleasure. I, I don't think anyone ever decides to run for council taking it lightly. People run for a myriad of different reasons. My main reason for running was I always believed in the citizens having a voice, and where they always have. I just wanted to make sure that that tradition continued, and I've been very fortunate to have so much support, whether I was the lone vote for something or trying to lead a charge to get a majority to pass certain issues. I always took my greatest strength from visiting with people throughout the, the community. I was fortunate to have a small business in town here, and people knew where to find me, and they, I'm glad they weren't shy to speak up and, and share their, their thoughts. I, I definitely took that council as the most important in my decision-making for all these issues. I will always cherish this, and thank you all. This is a beautiful, beautiful plaque. It will be in, taken care of forever. I'm sad to go, but I, as you know, I, I won't be gone long. Before I was on the council, I was no stranger to be on, on that side, and I hope citizens felt comfortable during, during my time as well as the rest here. We greatly appreciate your, your input, and I also tried to make a point of trying to encourage folks to run for office. It's a big decision. It's, it's a wonderful experience. It has its challenges, but it's so important for the process, discussion of issues, move the debate forward, and without people running, important issues in all of our lives can get missed. I guess I'll close in saying I'd also like to thank, congratulate, and appreciate our great fearless leader, President Kevin Levy. He is also finishing his presidency this week, and I think that you've done a phenomenal job. He's been very fair and just and encouraging to get all ideas and opinions out there. He always tried to make a point to allow counselors, individuals, citizens, staff to have their opportunity to say what they thought was important to, to get across in these debates. And so, because my three minutes is up, I could go on and on, but.
Go ahead, go ahead. It was three minutes, but you were talking about you, but when you talk about me.
Reset the clock, okay. Here we go. Really fantastic job. You've, you've moved the city forward, as have all the counselors, but specifically for tonight. Thank you very much, President Kevin Levy. Job very well. Job very well done.
Thank you. Thank you. I would also like to thank Eric. I kind of said my comments at the beginning, but there was never a time that you would go into the restaurant for dinner and he would always have an issue, or him and I would have a debate over dinner and it would end up with saying, well, Eric, if we're going to argue why I'm here, why am I paying for this meal? Because, but that's the kind of dedication that we have of all the counselors down here. But it's great to see someone who's going to get off the council and still be an advocate for the city. I think that plaque was designed to be on a wall, not in the dashboard of your car, Eric, because I can see your pride for the city. You want to make sure everyone knows where you're from, so continue to stay involved. There are several other committees that's open if you don't want to go far. There's a whole lot of vacancies, and we look forward to having your name come in some of those. But also, as Counselor Noonan stated, this is my last meeting as a president. The next meeting, we will have a new president, and I will be sitting somewhere. I don't know right now. But I want to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank my colleagues for allowing me to do this for two years. For those who don't know, they are, we are the ones that elect the president and the vice president, so I want to thank them for their belief in me and being able to lead this group. A lot of times, as Austin State, you may see us down here joking or having a good time, and it may appear that we're not taking this serious, but we truly do. We also believe that you got to have fun at what you do. We all love the city. We all respect the citizens, although we may not always agree. We do have one common goal in mind, and that is to move the city forward, and I think we have done just that. I would also like to thank the city staff, and that includes everybody. Over my two years as president, I know I bugged a lot of you with questions and comments and concerns and phone calls, but I really appreciate your dedication, and you love the city as well. There's never been a time that I called people with a question and they never got back to me, and I really appreciate that dedication, because truly, we can sit down here and make the decisions, but it's truly the staff that works behind the scenes, and that goes for everybody who works for the city, to move the city forward. We make the decisions, they do the groundwork, they do the grunt work, and I just want to make sure that I show, I appreciate them in public and let them know that I truly appreciate the job that they're doing. To Rebecca, who took on this responsibility, I think same time I took over as president, and her predecessor, Carol, was like, you better watch out for that person right there. She's the one that keeps me organized during the meetings, so a lot of times I can look at her, and a lot of people don't know, and she's giving me simple directions of where to go and what we need to do. So if I get lost down here and it looks like I'm not, it's because of Rebecca's leadership down here. I'm in such a short time, and I want to thank her for that. But I cannot express enough my gratitude to the colleagues and to the city staff, and then also to the citizens who keep me on my toes as well. So I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to lead this council for the last two years, and that concludes my comments. And that also includes council comments and upcoming events. Now we move to item 11, which is reports from boards and city officers. Report 11A, please.
A resolution approving a reciprocal mutual aid fire EMS protection agreement.
Chief Ligg.
Good evening, council president and city councilors. Hope you're having a great evening. You've been moving the agenda along pretty well. The Beloit Fire Department currently participates in the mutual aid box alarm system for its reciprocal mutual aid agreement. Recent legal review of the system practices in the state of Wisconsin and Illinois revealed that there was a gap in contract liability. The gap exists between the automatic mutual aid and all mutual aid below the box alarm level. For those, if you don't understand what that is, basically what we do is we have a card that we predetermined all of our, where we get all of our resources from when we have a large incident that exceeds our daily staffing to respond to. For instance, a large fire, a large crash in the interstate, some kind of hazardous materials incident, or a technical rescue, which, like a trench rescue or someone trapped in a tunnel, those all might exceed our normal day-to-day response capacity, so we rely on our mutual aid partners to help us out in those situations. That's what MABUS is for, the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. Now, below that level, let's say we have several medical calls at the same time, and we run out of ambulances to respond to those single alarms. That's below that MABUS box alarm level, and we have to rely on mutual aid from our neighboring communities for those calls also. We don't have liability protection in those situations, so that's what this agreement does. It helps cover us in those situations. So, we're currently at risk unless we have this agreement. Communities all over the state are going through the same process. The language in the agreement is consistent with our liability provisions in the current mutual aid agreement, the MABUS. We mirrored the language so that it was seamless. So if we had an escalating incident, let's say a incident that we had, was discovered to be a hazardous materials incident, and it progressively got worse, even it was a single-engine response, but got worse where we needed to escalate it into a full MABUS response, the liability protections are seamless through the whole mutual aid system, so that's a good thing. The agreement includes our mutual aid partners in Green Rock and Winnebago County. The agreement is essential for our continuity of operations during normal response volumes where multiple simultaneous calls for service occur. This is a neutral budget impact, and it is consistent with our strategic plan. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by DeForest, second by, sorry, Charles, Noonan, you know, we're going to give it all to him. Any council questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I call item 12, this is all Eric's. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I make a motion that...
We adjourn this evening.
Is there a second? Second by DeForest. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Pressing nay.
Yeah. [laughter][1764.43]